At this time, we have a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll ask Councilman Craig Hampton to his pledge.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to be the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, Captain, remember that you need to talk aloud where the night is recorded this night. Uh, at the studio for the sixth, but we are recording and we'll make sure that you look up to our YouTube. Later, have to leave. At this time, uh, Madam Burke, you have a roll call, please.
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mrs. Wilkins Brent?
Here.
Mrs. Fisher Conway?
Here.
Mrs. Hamburg?
Or is it?
Mr. Hampton?
Here.
Mr. Shawalter?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Uh, you. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for the last meeting?
Motion made.
Motion made by Ms. Tackett.
Second.
Second made by Mr. Hampton. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Let the record reflect that the motion has passed. You should have received your check registry. If you have received that, please raise your hand. Let the record reflect that all members of the council received it. At this time, we got public comments. A reminder, this is four minutes. Uh, when you come up and please just talk aloud and state your business. And once again, this is not a question and answers. And after four minutes, we will be timed and Madam Burke will let you know when your time is up. Nobody signed up, okay? All right. We have next the event applications. We have the, alright, we have Transform Scott County Annual Celebration.
Good evening, city council. Um, so we are requesting a closure of Main Street from North Hamilton, North Broadway to Hamilton. Um, so historically, Transfrom Scott County does an annual celebration every year. And this year, we wanted to make it more of a family-friendly event. And so we wanted to do it downtown Georgetown. What other place to do it when we transform Scott County? Uh, and so that's what our request is. That request is for eight twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, from four P M to nine thirty P M. Uh, we will be hosting a concert downtown. Um, and that would be what we are hoping to accomplish, um, as well as bringing awareness to our poverty alleviation program, um, in New York City as well.
You have a motion?
I want the motion.
Motion made by Ms. Brent?
Second.
Second made by Ms. Tackett. Are there further questions and or comments?
I've got a question.
Hmm?
So the activity starts at six and setup times is at four?
Yes.
You need two hours for setup?
That's because we will have a stage and we will also be, um, have any case on the auction area for that. And we'll also have a table set up where we will have, um, testimonies from individuals that we serve. So we wanted to make sure that we had plenty of time to be able to set those eagles up with the display and everything. So that's why we have requested two hours for the stage, for the band to get set up and for everything, just to allow some extra space in there for them.
What time do the things start?
The things will be starting by six.
That's good.
Yeah. And we hope to be done, we put nine thirty on there, uh, we hope to be done by eight thirty, but we wanted to get plenty of time for cleanup, so.
Question, Mayor?
Yes.
Um, you're sitting up in Court Street right now, right? That's where you're gonna be blocking everything out?
Yes, main, yeah, Main Street, North Broadway, yeah.
Okay.
Are there further questions? All those in favor of motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Let the record reflect that the, uh, motion passed. Next, we have the Corsi one hundred.
Hello, I'm back from work today. I was here about too long ago and didn't have a rap with me, so I could do all that if I could ever answer you. And I am going to the front of the chief, um, on the, oh my god! You should hear me, Chief, all right? I'm sorry, I told you I needed you today. He's been working with Corsi Hundred, uh, Dwayne on, Edway Edwards on, all the things that he will need as far as support for police. So I didn't want to give that summary. I thought he might be a little better at it.
As soon as she said that wrap, it's had to change a little bit, uh, for Saturday, May the twenty-fifth. Uh, basically, we'll be needed for the morning hours, uh, officers, the event will start at seven. Uh, the cyclists will need assistance coming left on the Carver Drive. Um, over the long way of road and pretty much for the rest of the day. We brought some stuff that they, uh, place outside of the city jurisdiction, so we'll just help them there. It's not a big issue for us. But Sunday, the twenty-sixth, starting at seven o'clock, uh, we will help the cyclist enter onto Cincinnati Pike. Uh, make a left turn, uh, let them down, make a left turn, uh, on Main Street. Off of Broadway and they'll continue out, uh, past Hamilton, Washington, out to Cleveland Circle, um, all the way up to Kerma. We'll have officers at, uh, pretty much the main intersections, such as Cincinnati Pike, uh, Broadway, we'll have them at Broadway and Main, Main and Hamilton, Ferris Pike and Washington, and Ferris Pike and Cleveland. Probably have two officers there, cause it's a bigger intersection. And then we'll still have, uh, probably an officer to monitor it, make sure they're out safe. And they're talking to, uh, Dwayne Edwards, you know, the main concern, getting the biggest group outside of the city. And of course, when they're coming back in, uh, they're coming into, um, Lemonsville, Clayton, that way. So what we'd like to have in the past, if they were, you know, maybe get a sign, uh, letting everybody know, or may, uh, put an officer there to, to like, some monitoring of the intersection.
Because no roads are being closed, correct?
Correct.
No, they did a good job of not closing when we don't have to.
Motion made by Mr. Allen?
Second.
Second made by Mr. Hampton. Are there further questions and or comments? Those in favor of motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise.
Thank you.
Let the record reflect that the motion passed. Where comments have just have a few. Uh, one is to see that, uh, the executive order proving the appointment of Jessica Norris can still to, uh, planning commission. Just want to re, uh, remind you or kind of go back a little bit on this. Uh, this, this vacancy occurred when, uh, Shirley, who used to be on the, uh, planning commission, uh, took the position as the planner for the George County Scott County Planning Zone. So that, that's a vacancy. So we're trying to fill that vacancy up at this time. I sent you her resume and information on her, so do I have a motion to accept?
Motion made.
Motion is made by Ms. Tackett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Ms. Ham, Ms. Hamburg, excuse me. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Let the record reflect that the motion has passed. Also, we need a motion to council a meeting for Monday, May the twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, that is, uh, Memorial Day weekend, and then it's a holiday. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
Motion made by Ms. Brent? Do I have a second? Second made by Mr. Allen. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Let the record reflect that the motion passed. We will, uh, send out some dates and when we can get everybody here for a long, kind of later time. Alright? Uh, this Friday at, uh, one of, one P M, uh, be the Main Street Clean Sweep, uh, program. This is open to the public as well as the council members and so on. We will provide the, uh, the gloves and bags. And what we do is you go downtown and clean up. That's what we do. So that's, you're gonna meet at the courthouse and we'll go from there. So if you're interested, wanna take part in that, uh, you know, just let me know or let me know. If not, just show up and, uh, we'll put you to work, alright? Uh, an update on the street lights on state roads are being installed, so that's good news. There you go. Uh, the budget work session will be this, uh, Thursday at four P M in this courthouse room, so, uh, want to remind you of that. So for me, that's all I have on my agenda here. Moving right on. Uh, council committee meetings, reports. Uh, we have police and finance today. For police?
Oh, good.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, met April first, meeting was called to order at nine oh two A M. President Mayor Jenkins, City Attorney Emily Buttram, C A of Devon Golden, council members Hamburg and Stone, and Captain Nick Low. Minutes were approved, um, discussed staffing and recruiting, um. We've just lost our last team of patrol officer to Lexington Police Department, but we're looking at others, uh, to hire. Uh, currently have two, um, certified officers that are in the process with Megan Miller. Once they're approved, past Megan, then they will be set for a hiring date. Currently at sixty-nine out of seventy-one officers, um, and we have current openings of two SROs, one part-time and two full-time positions. Um, Captain Low provided us with the packet for the Police Department budget request and justification. Five, the request for five new officers' equipment and other needs, uh, were in that packet. Uh, we discussed body cameras, uh, because it keeps getting pushed off. Uh, the updated quote is now, for five years, is now eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, Police Department, uh, everyone involved really wants this to occur. Um, the civilian position is advertised and they currently have eight applicants. Uh, they will have to learn about the confidentiality and open records, uh, request laws from City Attorney Emily Buttram. And, uh, they're going to cross-train the records clerk as an evidence technician, and evidence technician will cross-train on the body cameras. Um, we discussed the traffic union. Uh, we currently have nine officers that have applied and that the oral boards will take care, take place in mid to late April. Um, general discussion, um, Captain Low has been accepted to the FBI National Academy. Once he completes that, then we'll have the chief, assistant chief, and Captain Low will all be, uh, graduates of that, which will be a very high honor. Uh, also, the Police Department and the mayor will be meeting with the House of Authority. And the meeting was adjourned.
Alright, next is finance.
Um, just we met, uh, last Monday on the first, uh, just a very high level. Uh, we talked, we were presented with the first draft of the budget for, uh, for next year. And we will have the budget session on, uh, Thursday, the eleventh, at, from four to six in this, uh, room here. So, um, we'll have, uh, the first presentation of that to the full council and you'll be able to take a look at it. And, uh, any questions and, and comments for State, City, and Mayor and Department heads, so.
Alright. Anything else? Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. Right, at this time coming up, uh, we have number nine, we have G M W S S. Chase to come up, he's going to talk about A, which is the Brent Tag Bid South Incorporated of eleven thousand two hundred and five dollars.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as you said, eleven thousand two hundred and five dollars, that is for purchase of a four-week supply of sodium hydrochloride, which is a primary disinfectant of water treatment plant. This is purchased through our annual unit price contract that is bid. Um, this is for chemicals, parts, and materials. And so this is a recurring budgeted purchase, a water treatment plant operations budget.
Do you have a motion?
Motion made.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Allen, and we have a second. Uh, Ms. Conway, are there further questions and or comments?
No, just no questions.
Chase, how are we seeing prices right now?
Better than eighteen months ago. Um, we're still doing a lot of calling ground checking versus just going straight to the unit price contract that's bid. We see something that's better, we will obviously take it. And if we see something that, uh, that, that they will honor the unit price and it's the lowest, that's what we'll go with.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, if no further questions or comments, all those in favor of motion signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. V, uh, S S E Hazen Contract Amendment Number Four for one hundred and fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Well, just, uh, refresh, I'd advise, number of last council meeting, we took a very deep dive. I appreciate the, the time you allowed me at the podium to talk about where we are in the South Sur contract, wrapping that project up, but we are, given you that we are under budget. And we talked about the remaining action items that have to come before the council and the order commissioners. And the, the first item is, is item D that is on your agenda. I have the presentation, but we don't have, um, A B services tonight, so if we need to jump back into the financials or any, any questions on like, on these three items, I'll, I'll just have to shuffle through my papers and self-help answer. But, um, prepared to, to answer any, any further questions after, after what we did two weeks ago. But this is the, the first of three that we're asking you to consider tonight, and this is for additional engineering services, just at a high level. Additional engineering services pays them for expanded scope of services. They've been doing, uh, a number of months of work past their contractual and, uh, obligation on scope and schedule. And they'll probably be doing another three to six months of, of work to help wrap this up for construction admin and resident inspection. That's what this contract amendment is for, um, one hundred fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Motion made.
Uh, motion is made by Ms. Tackett, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second made by Ms. Brent. Uh, are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of motion of Hazen Contract Amendment Number Four for one hundred and fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Alright, next is C, is S S E How Contract Incorporated Change Order Number Five for seven hundred and twenty-six thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifteen cents.
Thank you, Mayor. I, again, went over this and that two weeks ago, and this, just at high level, again, this is for a change in scope and increase in scope in pavement restoration, um, uh, services from the contractor. We're going from what was contractual, the trench width pavement restoration to a two-drive lane restoration throughout the disturbed areas in the Mobile Home Park in Sawyer Point. I'm pointing out that this, this portion is part of the loan, but it is repaid by the owner of the Mobile Home Park. Say it again for Peter once more. This is not paid by the right payers. This is funded by Sawyer Point. We have two representatives, A J Singleton, Mr. Singleton, who had been representing them, could not be here tonight, so, um, we have Kurt and Bob here tonight. If you have any questions for them. But, uh, I'm happy to answer any further questions on, on this change order that is part of, um, part of the construction contract. Any further questions?
Motion made. There you go.
Okay, well, now everybody's jumped on this one time, alright? So, so we'll draw a start. I think I heard you first. So, uh, Ms. Tackett made the motion. Do I have proof second? Okay, Ms. Hamburg, second. Are there further questions and or comments?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Okay, um, Chase, uh, you know, start out, but thank you very much for explaining it to the council, how, how this is gonna work. And we do, I do appreciate that, you know, the rest of the council does. Uh, with this motion, you know, last, at our last meeting, I, you know, I was like, I'm not ready to vote on this. You know, I, I've studied this and gone through it, and I understand the need, you know, to get this done. And if we're gonna have a motion, I would really, really like the motion to contain a contingency in it that we do not issue the contract change until we have a bond in place. If that's possible.
So we have, uh, actually, I traded, uh, some communications with Mr. Singleton last week, late last week. And, um, the bond is the payment default bond, that is kind of an insurance policy for the city and the utility that is spelled out clearly within the user agreement. The, uh, legal language is, as Mr. Singleton and I were going through that, is it substantial completion? The city and the utility, um, give Sawyer Point notification, uh, and then it has to be supplied within sixty days of that notification. Um, we have not, I, I know that we traded emails and communications related that the flow, when the flow was taken off, um, the package treatment plants and when the, um, we started receiving the flow. I don't know if there was a formal, uh, just looking back at, I do not know if there was, I do not believe there was a formal letter from the city to Sawyer Point saying, hey, we've reached substantial completion in the six days this started. Does that, I believe that's what, I don't think that you oversee that. So, um, depending on their schedule, I don't know the timing on, I know that Mr. Singleton said they've started looking into the payment default bond. I think part of it was they wanted to see whether the change order was, um, approved or not, so they knew the exact amount as of today. Knowing that when we close the project out to a final adjusting, uh, change order for all of the expenses at the end, we'll probably have to adjust that again as we will with all the financials, but, um, I, I think that we just have to look at that, um, contract, the user agreement contract language, that sixty-day period. And then, um, if we wanted, if, depending on how quickly Sawyer Point can get that to us, and then when we can get with the contractor and say, when the pavement plants open back up, I think all of that can line up. But I, I'm just putting that out there that I do think we have had substantial completion, but I don't think that communication, so we, uh, was sent, so I don't think, we do not have a bond in hand as of today. But, um, that is kind of spelled out in the user agreement, and I think we can, we figure that out, uh, upon approval of the.
Can I speak?
Yes, yep. I think we can, I was saying, I think we can work that out, though, but.
I represent, uh, Mobile Home Park owner. So the reason why there's no bond is because the bond, body company is gonna want the amount that they're going to provide. And without a change order being approved, we don't know what the amount of the bond is going to be. So it's kind of like putting a cart before the horse, but as Chase mentioned, the user agreement does talk about the owner being responsible in the contract language for providing an insurance bond. And the owners, it's not to this point showing any indication that they are going to do what they said they're going to do. It's not a fact, they're trying to make it a much better community to live in. And so the last thing they want to do is default and have a problem with the city because they didn't issue a bond. So that's the reason why there's no bond yet, but my, uh, my, the Mobile Home Park owner is, uh, more than willing to issue a bond. They have all attention to that.
Thank you. Alright, are there any other questions?
Yes, sir. Chase, and just to, I know we hashed this earlier. I know that this is using public funds on private property, which for years and years is a big no-no, but you have reached out through K I and they did approve this and said that there is no conflict on this, is correct?
I'll, I'll answer that in two parts. One is looking at the whole project. Um, one of the largest chunks of this is replacing the sewer on private property.
Right.
Um, that does become public sewer that we take ownership of. That's how this is structured. Um, as presented in the last meeting, the exact language that was within the PowerPoint presentation, that was a word-for-word excerpt from written communication from Kentucky Infrastructure Authority saying that the work in the change of scope and change order number five is a, a group use of plan.
So there's no conflict that everybody's on board with this?
Yes, sir. Including Frank? Yes, sir, there is no conflict.
Okay, including Frankfurt, so.
If Frankfurt, you mean Kentucky Infrastructure Authority, yes, they, they, uh, have given that in writing.
Okay, alright.
Are there further questions?
You know, this is quite common, I guess. Must, I think must have been of what some others have kind of dealt with, but I appreciate that's going back and that begins with bond to ensure that the city doesn't carry it part of itself. Next, please.
So at this time, I'm gonna ask, uh, if there's further questions or comments. At this time, I'm gonna ask, Madam Burke, we're gonna have a roll call for this.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Shawalter?
No.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamburg?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilkins Brent?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Come on, I'm standing.
And let the record reflect that the motion passed. This is number six?
Seven.
Seven, seven one, and one is staying?
Six to one, I think.
Six to one, one is staying, okay. Next, we have E, which is, uh, S S E How Contract Incorporated Change Order Number Six for three hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety-one cents.
This was the last change order that I presented on, and this was, this was part of the contract that is borne by Georgetown Municipal. This is for some miscellaneous expenses that we have seen, um, to, from now to the finish of the project completion. The majority of this, as I showed you a picture, or a few pictures and some video, was the unexpected deep watering costs of keeping these trenches pumped down from groundwater so they can actually do work. Some of that is always to be expected. I've never seen it like this on a, on a, on a contract that part of the change order started at just under five hundred thousand dollars was requested in additional funds. That was negotiated down to two hundred thousand, which is the lion's share of this change order. Other parts are, um, some additional connections, some additional valves, fencing and a fencing replacement and new fencing, and then a new pump station cover for one of the other system stations that had to have modifications to make all of these hydraulics work. This is still, this is a not-to-exceed number of three hundred fifteen thousand two hundred ninety-eight dollars ninety-one cents. I'm actually working to negotiate this down, but so we can go ahead and be started on part of this. Um, it would not exceed that number, and you can go come in lower.
Alright, you, you have a motion? Made by Mr. Allen, do I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Ms. Tackett. Uh, are there further questions and or comments? The motion is made for the S S E How Contract Incorporated Change Order Number Six for three hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and nine, ninety-one cents. All those in favor of motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Let the record reflect that the motion passed. Next, item number ten, Chief Administrative Officer A, municipal order approving an amendment to the South Sur Extension User Agreement.
So I know these items are in your packet again, but this was a portion of Chase's presentation at the last meeting, um, acknowledging that if the pavement change order were to be approved, um, and actually this, the subsequent change order six as well, we'd have to adjust the number of things in the user agreement. Um, tip, uh, most importantly, the amount that the owner of the property is, is owing under the K I loan. So obviously, as we mentioned, that, that portion of, of the change order is being attributed to their, their costs under the user agreement, so we have to change it to reflect that. But we also have the opportunity to acknowledge the, the new ownership and make some of those cleanup changes. So all those changes are reflected, um, red lines and, and the like in the user agreement. And there will be, um, a formal amendment agreement that will be passed by the city, Georgetown Municipal, and then signed by all three parties.
Gotcha.
A motion is made by Ms. Tackett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Ms. Hamburg. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of municipal order approving an amendment to the South Sur Extension User Agreement? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Now.
I think I have to extend, uh, extend from the change order, I agree.
I think I have to extend the cover, saying from the change order back to the.
Please.
Close to me.
Okay. You have it in? So we, uh, motion passed. Next, we have the second reading of the ordinance correcting street name Buffalo Springs Trail. Sponsors both Hambrick and Tony Tackett.
The ordinance correcting the street name of Buffalo Springs Trail to Buffalo Springs Trail is the official city street map summary. One, renamed Buffalo Springs Trail to Buffalo Springs Trail is matched the street name as recorded in flat book C A D five, page seventeen twenty-three, null and records in the Scott County City Clerk's Office. To provide for full and consistent ordinances, several located provisions in an effective day compassionate publication. The potential of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, Excreting Nine, York Bible Eight, Georgetown, Kentucky, four, three, two, four, or at W W W Georgetown, K Y R dot. Introduce the public to write the first time March twenty fifth, twenty twenty-four. Public to read the second time April eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Come in there.
I have a motion made by Ms. Tackett, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second made by Ms. Brent. Are there further questions and or comments? At this time, Madam Kirk, we have a roll call.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilkins-Brent?
Yes.
Mrs. Switzer-Carmody?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamper?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Scholter?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
That's a record reflect that the second reading of the ordinance correcting the street name Buffalo Springs Trail, sponsors both Hambrick and Tony Tackett, passed. Next, item number eleven, uh finance is municipal order closing out a certificate of deposit uh at Stark Guard Bank. Mr. Stacy?
Uh, yes, um as we talked about at Finance Committee, we're just closing out some of the smaller cities that we've had through years so that we can make more intentional larger investments. So this is just part of that process of continuing to clean that up. It will deposit it into the money market account at Central Bank. And then hopefully right after the budget's passed, we'll be talking about some more. Not pass, but after I finish the budget, it's ready for presentation, we'll talk about some more uh larger investments as well. And then of course I'll give you a quarterly finance update, investment update, the next meeting in April.
Do you have a motion?
Motion made.
Motion made by Mr. Hampton, second by Mr. Allen. Uh, are there any questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion, municipal order closing out a certificate of deposit at Stark Guard Banks, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise.
Good job.
That the record reflect, motion passed. At this time, we have council comment. Mr. Stone?
I'm good, thank you sir.
Mr. Allen?
Uh, may we talk last week about the public's questions and responses?
I will get those too, yeah, no, I have not, and I will get that too. That's all there.
And then any uh, I think on the regional industrial park.
Yes, yeah, but I will let you know that I will get that information to you all. We are now finalizing that, so we're gonna get that out to the council as well as the public sewer.
That's all there. Oh, one other thing, uh I did see a trash picked up Monday and there was trash around the trash can. And when they picked up the can, of course, saw the trash stayed on the ground. So I took the picture and I'll have some documentation. If you get a call that they did pick up, it was a trash that would be on the ground.
Okay, thank you.
I'll send it to you.
Thanks Rob. Uh, Ms. Tackett?
I'm good Mayor, thank you.
Ms. Conway?
I'm good too, except I hope that, take it, like you said, stickers on the trash can for information to help the public.
All right, Ms. Brent?
I just want to say thank you to the Ashton Grove Assistant Living Facility. They had a, for the community, they had kids up for Easter egg hunt. And I just want to thank the activity director there and all the workers because it's always for, you know, the kids and the community to come up there. That's all I have.
Ms. Hammond?
Yes, I've had a couple of people call me and say that they have had the stickers or the little door hangers put on their door, but they feel like they've already filled out the mitigation questionnaire online. And so they're wondering, do they have to, did that not get recorded? Do they have to contact the water company? They're, they're confused because they felt like they completed it, but they're still getting the door hanger. So if somebody could clarify that, so that I can clarify them.
I'll ask, we're looking to that, yes ma'am.
Um, since we know that that deadline's coming up pretty soon. Um, also, I've had a couple of people concerned, especially with summer coming up, about the crumbling Green Home behind the, the old jail. So if we could have an update, I know that we own that.
Yeah.
But it's increasingly in bad shape. I think we have the possibility of selling it, so an update on that.
You will give, you will give me an update then? Yes sir.
Okay.
Yes sir.
And thank you to the museum for the fiftieth year um anniversary of the tornado that wiped out the stamping ground. It's a great um testament to a lot of hard work, especially with the stamping ground on interest students. If you get a chance to go down there, it's uh gonna be up through most of the summer, I believe, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hampton?
I'm good.
Sure. Uh, three items, two of which were brought up earlier in the meeting. I was trying to get clarification on. So in the police committee meeting, the, the body cameras were, what was the cost that you said? Over a four or five?
Over a five-year period, it's going up to eight hundred thousand. Plus, but that's going up to. It wasn't there, so. Uh, the cost is going up because they're gonna get enough for all the officers. Plus, they're gonna get a couple of spares and all of the contracts. And they're the, the same models that Sheriff's Office has so that they will communicate with each other. And the Commonwealth Attorneys and the County Attorney's Office has the programming, so all they have to do is pull it up. It's, it's not having two different systems and, and jumping back and forth as we've had in the past.
Second item, thank you, thanks. Second item, um you mentioned in the mayor comments about the street lights that are going up.
Mm-hmm.
And I know we had a gentleman here at our last meeting in the public comments that was specifically talking about air spike.
It got those street, those little ones going.
Okay, so I'm, I've noticed over the past week, the two, not a week, a week and a half, that there are several new lights that are up between Wendy's on air spike going out towards to Crumble. Are all of those lights up? Or will there be additional lights that are going to go up? Because there's still a couple of intersections that are.
Let me bring A, okay.
Yeah, there's some. Thank you, all right. Um, basically every intersection from Wendy's on out to um the last one is Crumble. Here's the last one. Um, each intersection gets new lights as part of the streetlight by State Road project. I got a complete list, I could, uh, I've sent it to the mayor, he'll get it forwarded to you. And it shows all the um intersections by name. There's, there's a list of, oh, it's about eleven different intersections around the town, most of which are on the four sixty corridor um that are all getting new lights. And that's the one that got delayed due to the nail hole switch. Um, and but now they're in and putting them in, so probably we're getting them getting it done, so.
Mayor, can, can we get that list?
Yeah, I will, I'm, I'm, okay. Tracy, put, make a note there to remind me to do that, and I'll get that out to you.
All right. Uh, thank you.
You're welcome.
For last, I had a person call me lunchtime today that said they witnessed two cars, one coming up the hill here, uh, sitting on, coming up the hill towards the square and one turning off of Broadway coming in this direction. And I've noticed that there are signs on, I didn't know if somebody can look at that? Um, because when you're coming from North Broadway towards town, unless I missed it, I didn't see a one-way sign in that direction. But you can see it going north. So I need to know if somebody can at least look at that.
I will.
The person was really concerned, more, more so coming in this direction than up the hill. Call them off car, call them case, so anyway, I want to see if somebody can look at that.
I will have to look at that, we will check in that and report back to you.
That's it.
Thank you. All right, so if there's no other further business, thoughts for this council, this meeting, and.